I'd like to welcome you to the Town of Carabasette Valley, Carabasette Valley Annual Town Meeting, but it's an abbreviated version this year. With COVID, we've had to change the annual town meeting from an open style to a secret ballot referendum, requiring a public hearing. Most importantly, absentee ballots will be available at the town office to vote on the 22 articles in the town meeting. And they're stat on page 35 on our town meeting booklet. It's also on the town website now. But the absentee ballots will be available tomorrow. Get them, fill them out at your leisure, and turn them in in time for April 14th. On April 14th, we will have, the polls will open for the voting of town officials, and the town meeting ballot referendum will take place right here in the town office from 8:00 to 6:00. Any questions from the board of selectmen? With that, I will turn it over to Dave to go through the budget items.
Okay, thank you, Bob. As far as the entire budget is in the town report, which is on the town website. And if you go to page 35, the town budget starts there. So you can look at the entire town budget. And so what I'm going to do right now is, it would take forever to go through this entire town budget. This budget is being recommended by the entire budget committee, which consists of five of the selectmen and seven citizens. So it's been reviewed by the budget committee and recommended. And you can see that entire budget, and we're going to walk through it very quickly here in a minute, in the town report, which is on the town website, as is, Bob indicated, the town warrant. Now, the town warrant, we're going to get to in a minute also after this. And it's only got 22 warrant articles this year, instead of the usual 60-something. Obviously, thinking that if you walk into the booth and/or if you take home a ballot, that, you know, we tried to consolidate things this year. So as Bob indicated, the actual town meeting itself is a referendum-style town meeting, which is going to be on April 14th. Polls will be open from 6:00 to 8:00 to vote on all town officials and the 22-warrant article. So having said that, what we're going to do now, I'm just going to do an overview of the entire budget so you can understand what's going on, but I've explained it in the town report, in my report, my annual report to the town. But in addition to that, we're just going to, just very briefly, go through some of the important things in the warrant. Again, what we don't want to do, so that you can see some of the highlights. So as far as the total municipal appropriations, if you look right here, you'll see this in your town book. I may have added this later. But having said that, total town municipal appropriations this year are 2,660. That is a 1.6% increase over last year. If you look at going back to 2018, the total town appropriations were 2,572,000 and change. That's a 4, so this year is a 3.4% increase over the entire three years, just to point that out. So no significant increase in town appropriations. However, we have seen a dramatic increase in our schooling enrollment, which I'm going to explain here in a minute. But then I'll explain the overall budget and then go back and just kind of hit the highlights. There are some different things we're doing this year as compared with previous years. So having said that, that's what the total municipal appropriations are. We're going to talk about those in a minute in more detail. This is the school budget, which I just want to show. And it's not finalized. The school, just so that people understand this, perhaps a lot of people watching here may not understand this, but the town tuitions students. We do own a school system, which means that we pay tuition for all of our K-8 students that either go to Kingfield or Stratton schools, and we pay based on their per pupil cost. High school, we pay based on a state average figure that is given to us. So we pay tuition for all of our kids. And the school budget is put together by the school committee. There are different fiscal years in the act. And there's usually a town meeting that takes place in late May or June for the education budget, for the school budget. So that needs to take place, or will take place in the future. Having said that, we have had some preliminary numbers, as we always do every year, from the school superintendent and the school committee. And it's still early, but basically, we are looking at, just because it's important to understand the overall budget. You're not voting on this in April 14th or on the absentee ballots, but just to have an understanding of what's going on, it would be useful for you to know. See, this is your education expenses. They're increasing this year because of the, we've gone from slightly under 50 total students to almost 80. That's a 60% increase in the number of students. So it's dramatic, and that's reflected in the budget. That school budget is increasing, the total of expenses is increasing 33.6%, or a little over $3.5 million. In addition to that, unfortunately, there's not a lot of school surplus left over. So normally, we have, we believe there'll be some, but that's up to the school committee to decide just how much of that surplus is used against the tax commitment. But having said that, it was 260,000 last year. And again, this one, whatever you want to call it, estimate is based on zero. Now, that may change. And so having said that, there would be a significant net increase in the school budget that would go from 82%, 1.4 million and change to, from 800,000. That's a significant increase. Fortunately, or depends on how you look at it, we have a different fiscal year than the school. Only half of that would be appropriated for this year, but it's still a significant increase. Now, when we go a little further with this, just for informational purposes, we pay an assessment to Franklin County. That assessment, as you can see, has been growing constantly. Out of 21 towns in Franklin County, Carabasette Valley pays, has the highest state valuation, which means we pay the most money for our county assessment. And it's been growing up larger than the county budget percentage-wise is because our valuation has been going higher than the other town, percentage-wise, higher than the other towns in the county. So that enters into this also, and we anticipate that to be close to 900,000. Having said that, when you add it all up, down at the bottom here, we have been very fortunate to have a very low mill rate for a number of years here. In fact, even if you go back before 2018, it's been about $6,050,000. And it was again last year. But we anticipate it could go as high, you know, again, not knowing exactly what the school budget was, $7.40, $7.40,000. Well, that's about a, close to a 14% increase. So if we had to guess at this time, you would see a bump in your taxes this year, but again, the mill rate, this mill rate still stays relatively well compared with a lot of communities. So that's the overall part of this budget. Now, what I'm going to do, what we'd like to do is just go through very briefly some of the highlights, again, of the municipal budget. Again, the municipal budget, the appropriations are only, are increasing 1.6% this year. But there are some different things that we're doing this year to try to accommodate, trying to sort of eliminate as much as we can and make, you know, the mill rate be reasonable. So what you see up here is important, is that we go across, and you'll see this in the town report, you've got four years of budget right here, so that you can see compared to previous years. And this is the current request. So we'll go down through here. This is the salaries for municipal government. This is town office expenses. Now, one of the things that is increasing is legal fees. We historically, not much money for legal fees. We've gone up, this 30,000 this year. The board feels, the selectmen feel it's necessary to budget to have legal representation concerning potential pending state legislation involving rather dramatic changes to the 1980 Indian lands claim settlement that could have a substantial impact on the town. And it's very important, I want to get into a lot of details of that. I've explained it in my report, in the town report. We'll be very respectful in this process, but it does have substantial, could have some substantial impacts for the town, again, that I've explained in the article in the town report. Again, it's on the town website if you wish to view that. So that is a big, a significant increase in the budget, in the town budget. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on some of this stuff. Much is, a lot of this is very similar to previous years. We have tax assessing expenses. We have co-reformative office expenses. As most towns do, we have planning board expenses. We do hire AVCOT. It's a tri-county council of governments that provide services to all the towns in most tri-counties. And again, some of that's based on our state valuation, and we pay them dues. Selectmen's expenses and town donations. We spend, the selectmen decide every year to give money to events, whether it's the Sugarloaf Marathon, whether it's POPS, or in various public service organizations. And that's based, we, the board makes decisions rather than have about 15 warrant articles to save the town wants to prove all of these various organizations. The town has always handled it this way. We let the selectmen who know who deal with this and the town manager as to what agency should be funded and those that are appropriate for the town. We have, obviously, we have a police department that we fund. I think we're down a little bit this year because of training right here. We've got a sizable balance forward that you're not seeing here that we're asking to carry forward. So that's why, this is your communication center. This is the town's portion of that. This is over a $500,000 operation. The town pays this much of that. There are other levels for monitoring fees, from people who have their homes monitoring. That's a fairly significant part of this. And then I think there's, condo owners get a, they pay a fee also for the enhanced security that they're getting. In the fire department, we are, we have increased the fire chief's salary to be commensurate with his job description, which has changed. He's also the emergency management director. The board of selectmen have approved the job description for that. And obviously, he is in care of all the new fire station also. So it felt that that was very deserving and needed for all that that person does. Fire department equipment reserve, we've got over $400,000 in this reserve. So it's felt that we could take a year or two off and kind of try to absorb some, to help with the, you know, with the tax increase due to school and also the debt service on the new fire station. We're operating a new fire station, so that amount is the best guess, at about $21,000. It does include a $5,000 reserve also. After a year of operation, we'll have, that includes plowing, plowing out. We put that, you know, we ask for quotes, and those are the kind of, that's the kind of pricing that we get. So to plow up that entire lot. NOSTA subsidy, this is NOSTA EMS, that's your ambulance service. And the town, we pay a portion of that subsidy that's not paid for through user fees and through insurance. So obviously, we all know this is an incredibly vital service to the community. Animal control, we paid less for that in recent years, and so that's that. Insurance accounts, these are all of the town's insurance accounts. There's property insurance, general liability insurance, and law enforcement, aviation insurance, and vehicle insurance, all that good stuff. Having said that, we, these are the recreation accounts, $74,000. They're pretty consistent. We are paying a little bit less for some time because we've got a balance forward. We didn't have a full program last summer, so we had a fairly significant balance forward that we're able to then try to keep this amount of appropriations down. We should have played and operated. Incredible program. Hopefully, given COVID, we can get back to a full program. It's a very popular program. Anti-gravity Center, nothing really new there. We are now putting money in the capital reserve. This is matched by CBA that goes into a capital reserve account for capital expenses related to the anti-gravity center. This is kind of a big increase. The narrow gauge pathway maintenance. We are also asking to put FEMA money that we received into a reserve account because at some point, we're going to have, whether it's that big walkway bridge up there or other, hopefully not catastrophic events. We had two small floods there last year, they're about $3,000 apiece. What we're also doing here, and I think people realize it, is that we're doing a much, a higher level of maintenance on the narrow gauge, especially in terms of grooming. The narrow gauge, as most of you know, that you're seeing a tremendous increase in usage. And I think it's been really appreciated that the level of grooming has improved, and people have really appreciated it. But it costs money, so that's what's going on there. Let's see if I can get this thing to move. Library operations, that's just library operations, that's not the building. Because we obviously pay a full-time librarian and insurance, telephone, special events, all that stuff. Not much of a difference there, you can see from one year to the next. Community building expenses, this is the actual, for the actual community center building. We did add a capital maintenance reserve for that. What we've been doing, and we do have some improvements to make that, particularly with that log facade that's in front of the building. We made some improvements last year. It's rotting because of water issues, and so we're going to be making some more improvements to firm that up. And we need some more money in there to hopefully divert some water or internet and preserve that beautiful log facade. Airport operation, as we did last year, we're recommending putting $10,000 into airport capital projects that would eventually fund a technical taxi lane project. Now, the town would need to make a vote in the future to approve that project. But what we're trying to do is put some money aside in eventuality that that project happens. We've got a long list, 13 folks that want to build hangars at the airport. So this project would help facilitate eight new tea hangars and three new hangars. The town would receive taxes on these buildings and also a land rent fee. We've actually done pretty well. I'm not showing it here, but we're not, yeah, right here. We're not spending any money for the fuel farm expenses. We're actually finally making money there, so that's been a good thing. And as time goes on, that money will contribute towards the expenses at the airport. Road maintenance accounts, pretty steady. Some of this, just to point out, this is the carriage road. We pay to maintain the carriage road in the summer months through an agreement with the Department of Indian Nation. We're obviously hopeful that that arrangement can continue. We also pay in this power of our road platting contract, is with 2.4 miles of road, we have to pay to plow on the, on the road that goes out to...
Long Falls Dam.
The Long Falls Dam, thank you very much. And we have 2.4 miles of that, and we pay the county, Somerset County, for a portion of that plowing cost. About $18,000 of that, $52,000. Transportation program, that's an $800,000 project, operating budget. And it's hugely popular. The town pays $140,000 towards that, as does Sugarloaf. Sugarloaf pays $140,000, matches the town's amount in that. And then we're able to, there's an enhanced program on the mountain, and the condo owners pay $40 apiece for a very enhanced program. And in addition to that, we're able to get state and federal funds. So, and that's one by Western Main Transportation. So, again, a very popular program, another collaboration that this town does. Transfer station, we'll reduce that by 30,000, well, here, in terms of the reserve because we've got money to probably back it up there, which we need to do. So that kind of helped a little bit. These are the recycling, recycling budgets, only about 12 grand. It does cost money to recycle, though it almost, it costs actually more, it's an awful thing to say, than it does to throw it in the garbage. But people are adamant they want to recycle, and I understand that, you know, and it's a great thing. So we continue to keep that program going. Hopefully, someday, there'll be more long-term answers towards making that cost effective. Debt service, these are all the debt service payments that the town makes. We also get a significant amount of this, some of this contributions from Sugarloaf for some of these projects. The golf course clubhouse building one, for instance, they paid 37.5%. Communication, no, that's gone now. And let's see what else. And irrigation project, which is a lot, they pay a similar amount, $47,000 for the town share of that also. And they also are contributing towards a five-year barn that's going to expire in another year. And here's the new fire station barn, $74,000. So again, we're close here, though nevertheless, and that's because we're not funding the fire department ladder truck barn this year, which has paid off. And as the original town lot barn that is now paid off. We did pick up the debt service on the Jones lot, which is right here. So that's, so again, we're fortunate, some retired debt and some going, some new debt going forward. Employee benefit requirements are much the same they were last year. Social Security means they retire all workers' compensation, which were required. We self-fund our employment, that did take a jump this year, as many businesses saw happen. So the Social Security, which we already required to pay, so. Other accounts, these, some of these are contributions to, for instance, the information center, Flagstaff Area Business. They have asked for additional $5,000 to continue their operation there at the information center. The town does pay to operate the information center. We pay, we pay the heat and electricity, just general expenses to operate that also. The sugarloaf ski club, we give them $15,000 a year for aiding their scholarship program. This is the town scholarship program right here. That we, the town's very fortunate to be able to help fund seniors. They have, there's a five-year residency required for that. And they get so much, it's been anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 a year for graduates from local schools. So those are some things. Let's see here, capital maintenance. This is golf course reserve, $10,000, that's matched special to law. Clubhouse is the major capital expense, is required, is the town's responsibility. Recreation and Downland Fund, which the town puts money into. And we raise, and we, and with the various clubs that ask for matching grants, those, this year, I think they come to just under $40,000.
What's our current balance, Dave?
Current balance in that...
340.
340?
340,000, yeah. That's in the town report. I did put a whole page in here, incidentally, showing all of the town's reserves. And take your time to read that, with, you know, we're very pleased to have those reserves going forward. Very pleased to, and it's all in the town report here. We're very fortunate.
341,000.
Pretty close, Lloyd, 341,000.
Great economic driver for this community.
Absolutely, it really is. And you're absolutely right, because this is matching money. The organizations that want to get money for this has to be recreation-based, and they have to match it. Whatever requests, ATV club, at times, the snowmobile club, the mountain bike trail program, other entities, the shooting range, CBOA, so...
And on and on and on.
Yeah, on and on and on. And it's really, and it has to be matched. So it's been, the town set this up a long time ago. The town fathers go way back and look what they were doing. They're an incredible program.
And the cell tower revenue...
Yes, and the cell tower revenues that we, about 14 a year that we get from the cell tower to transfer station, town property. This also goes into this fund, there's a warrant article in here to ask that that continue. New town comp, it's a plan. We put 15 in this year, we need 15. It's probably a $45,000 project, so we will need to continue that. We're also assisting, again, with the history committee expenses. We also contribute as three or four other, the bigger towns in the county due to Franklin, Greater Franklin Development Corporation, Rangeli, I believe, Huntington, and Wilted contribute to this program also. It's kind of a benefit for the entire county, but the town has been generous in supporting that program. They had some trails. Now, this $5,000 is just for trail mates, to help them, everybody uses their trails. So this is just to help them groom their trails, maintain their trails, that the whole public is using. So again, that, so we're back to the total municipal appropriations, which I previously discussed at 2.6. So that's kind of the highlights of the budget. And then that sort of moves into the area and follows the town warrant, which you will be voting on. And that, you can walk through that, Bob, if you want. You can start that process. So there are 22 warrant articles in the budget, in the town meeting. This is much different from the past, when we had almost 60. As Bob pointed out, the town, the town meeting itself is going to be April 14th, 8:00 to 6:00 to vote, as opposed to an open town meeting. But you can vote, as Lloyd indicated, by absentee, starting tomorrow on March 16th. You can take it home with you, vote on them, look at the budget, return the ballot. It has to be in by 8:00. I think the phone...
Okay, you can hold on to that for me.
Yeah, we really have to take a quick break and re-up the phone here, I think.
No, no.
No?
The one person that was on there got done.
One person that got on it got done, so now we got music.
Hey, Andy, how many you have on? Can you tell?
12.
How many?
12.
12.
We have people on TV that are watching this on computer, but nobody that's...
I've done it.
Apparently, nobody is on...
Maybe one of us should call from our cell phone.
Or call from the town office.
Yes, somebody call in.
We stopped the music by...
So the music stops.
You keep talking.
I'll keep talking on the budget, and we'll call in, so we're not listening to music, so. So again, as Bob indicated, that's the process involved this year because it's very different with COVID, so we're having a referendum-style town meeting now. So we start out 8:00 in the morning, on the 14th of April, we elect a moderator, and then all the necessary town officials, and then all of the budget items that we just talked about. Now, the normal things that we vote on every year. I'm going to walk through this pretty quickly because I've just walked through that budget with you. And again, the entire budget is in the town, is in the town report. So having said that, and then these are the usual things. We go into the new year, and we ask to expand one-fourth of the previous annual budget from the period of the new, three months going into the new year because we don't have our town meeting until March. So that's a standard one, and most of these are. Now, these are the general government articles that we just went through. The only thing we added to it, just to consolidate the number of articles, is that we did, we put employee benefits in here as opposed to leaving it as a separate article. But it's all, again, if you follow it, you can follow it in the town, the budget in the town report. The, so that's that. These are all the protection accounts that we just talked about. New mountain fire station, insurances, communications, police department. The next one is all of the recreation programs. Now, I did speak to it briefly, but we are also asking to transfer $31,000 and change in FEMA funding received in 2020 to approve any balance that's in that 17.5 right here into the narrow gauge maintenance account at the end of the year. So to help move forward a reserve there for capital, what will undoubtedly be capital expenses in the future. This one here is, we've been doing this for several years now. We've asked the town to vote, to allow, authorize the board of selectmen to implement a town lot forest management plan. The forest management plan is in the town report. And to use the proceeds from that plan for purposes of forest management activities and maintenance improvements to the outdoor center, public lot, roads, and trails. As you may know, it is anticipated, right here, 80,000 of these funds will be expended in 2021 for the continual outdoor center slash public lot trail bridge replacement program. We're replacing these, all of those wooden bridges, as you may know, with pre-cast concrete panels, which will make these bridges last a long, long time, much more than the 10 years... years we're getting on headlock bridges. So this should, I mean, these should last 50 years or more. So, and that's what we're doing with this. So, and it's been a very, we've had, it's been going incredibly well. We've probably got two or three more years of this. We ate, ate bridges this year. They're, they're not, they're expensive, but you're done with it. So in this one here, this is $50,000 for recreation endowment reserve, which we talked about in the, this year, where it was planning, we've got requests for just under $40,000. As we indicated, mountain bike grants are matching, 15 grand. ATV club, they want to buy a, a kind of a, not fancy, but an improved ATV that they can work on the trails with, because they've been using their own. And, and this would be, help facilitate the program. We, every year we've been giving to this Longfells Mountain Heritage Trails on a multi-use project that they, that they're involved with in the area. Town matching funds for the outdoor association, we stock the fish there if anybody's interested. You can fish, fly fish there. So, and hopefully people are taking advantage of that. It hasn't been used a lot, but hopefully it'll be more so in the future. This is the airport project that we talked about previously, that we're operating, $10,000 in airport reserve and then in addition to the regular operating. Most of this is plowing. It's 16, 17,000, that 25 is for plowing the airport. And again, to put money reserve towards a project that would be funded, a taxi lane project that would be funded in the future. Let's see. These, again, match the, they match the expenses we just went through with the budget. So nothing unusual here. Again, these are the same things we just went through in terms of town buildings, recycling, transfer station operation, all of these things that we normally, operations, we fund every year. This is the obligated debt that we just went through. In fact, Sugarloaf is giving, is, will be extending $110,000 to the town as their share of some of these, some of this debt service. And CBA will be giving us additional money also, $11,000 towards the roof project. That's 50/50 that we did, 10-year note that we did to put a whole new roof and insulation on the roof of the AGC back up two or three years ago. These are some of the other organizations that were raised, again, we've talked about these. These are the following town programs, the, again, the town departments, planning history committee, we talked, transportation services, we talked about. Now, this one needs a little explanation, but the town, as you may know, has a five-year lease currently that expires in June with, with Sugarloaf to operate the outdoor center facilities, the outdoor center. Funds between the town and the club, this is 50/50 money between the town and the club. And there's going to be some significant expenses moving forward with new trail development on, on the state Wyman Law into the Clarka Mountain, state-owned Clarka Mountain parcel in Kerabassett Valley. So that, those funds will be needed to develop additional mountain bike trails. So, so these are, again, on, pretty much, there's the 50 yard shooting range that they just didn't, CBOA just didn't get to last year. So that's money that's available for them to, for that project. And they have to match that, let's be honest. Okay, so, and then these are ongoing things that we've just discussed.
Dave, the history committee could say that it's now.
Go ahead, go for it.
It's the first chapter or two are, are published and ready to go. And I think you're on the website now, right?
I believe they are. I, I, I don't like, if they're not, if they're not, they will be soon. I think they may be, though.
The committee hired a lady named Ginny Wright, who was the editor of Down East Magazine, is doing one heck of a job, categorizing and cataloging our great community's history. It's pretty exciting. And our committee chair is Bob's mother, Jean Louie, who's done a magnificent job in adding us. Just a little FYI there.
So going forward, these are some revenues that we use against the tax, the 2.6 appropriations to reduce the tax bill, the, the tax amendment. We also give some for productions, 30% of the revenues and franchise fees we get to help operate the town's marketing promotional program. They basically are public access channel. I think that's pretty much it. So that pretty much explains the warrant. And again, you'll be asked to vote on that on April 14th, or you can vote absentee, starting tomorrow on March 16th. You can take it home, the ballot home with you, whatever you wish to do. Good job. It's enough. I tried to be as brief as possible.
You did good.
Now, I, I think I would open it up to anybody that wants to call in with any questions. Hopefully, there will be some, but.
Yeah, feel free to call me or the board of selectmen if, you know, call up.
Or stop in, or stop in tomorrow, pick up the town report and.
Yes.
And you can pick up a ballot at the same time from Wendy.
Please, you know, take the time, you know? In this day and age where everything's instant, you know? I've been around a little bit in terms of town government goes, you know? This used to be a pretty important document. People would rush down to town office to pick it up. They should, you know? We've got plenty of copies. It's an opportunity once a year to, to go through and understand the finances of the community. You live here. It's an opportunity to, to read what's going on. We have a lot of information in this thing from various town departments. And so it's, you know, it's a good opportunity. This is on the website right now as we speak. So you don't even need to come down and pick one up. You can go on the town website and read the town report. And then if you've got any questions, as Lloyd said, just call us. And we'd be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
We should have had prizes, maybe somebody could call.
Yeah, I think that would have been a good.
And watch and win.
Watch and, we should have watched and win.
Thank you to WSKI for broadcasting tonight. Our friend Andy back there.
Awesome job.
Your journey, your journey, yes.
Another minute?
We'll have a couple minutes. A moment of silence?
Some more commercials?
More commercials?
No, actually, I, you know, we, obviously, we're all dealing with this and we felt that this was the best way to have a public hearing and at the same time give you all the information, again, in this book. And it's a referendum vote, which is unusual for us because we all look forward to the town meeting in the outdoor center every year. And this is just one of those years we can't do it. We were, I guess, fortunate last year, we, we got it in just days before the whole place shut down. So we didn't have to deal with it last year.
A year ago today. The mountain and a lot of businesses up here close. It was a year ago today.
Year ago today.
Yep, March 15th.
So hopefully, this won't happen again, you know? But I think, I think Dave and his staff and everybody, it's kind of worked to get something that you can have in your hand. And quite frankly, you can have the ballot in your hand for a month if you want, but it gives you time to go through it and, and do the same thing you would do in the town meeting normally and vote. And we encourage everybody to vote and just drop it off at the town office before April 14th.
Correct.
At what time?
6 to 8 o'clock, 6:00 in the morning, no, 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night. And you can't come in that day and vote, right, that day.
Yes, you can't vote in person if.
And you come in in person and it'll be in the fire station here, at the town office, the fire station here, from 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 in the evening. And polls will close at 6:00 in the evening.